Until nine o'clock, so. Talk it up if you want. Clock says it's nine o'clock. This clock says it's not quite, but that's the public clock, so would... Would everybody like to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the sign in front of my place says I'm chair. I'm not. But before we even go any further with the meeting, we need to swear us all in for this next term, so let's start with that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Diane Severud. I'm the deputy clerk of the board of supervisors, and I'm here to give you your oath. So if you could all please stand. I'm going to have you raise your right hand, and you will repeat after me. And then when we are finished, I'll need you to each sign. Okay, so it'll take about two minutes. So I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter.
the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Yes. Glad we didn't have to memorize that. Well, now that we're in office, I can call the meeting to order. The ordinance provides that the vice chair can chair meetings if the chair is no longer on the commission. I was the vice chair under the last term. Our alternative would be, under the ordinance, that... Oh, by the way, the elections for the officers happen on the second Thursday of February, the first meeting of the planning commission in February, which is when we will elect the officers for this year. The ordinance also provides that when there is a vacancy in any of the offices, the chair... the commission can elect a replacement for the remainder of the term. So we could have an election today for queen for a day, chair for the day. And otherwise, I, as vice chair, will continue the meeting. Any suggestions from the commission?
Well, if we elected a chair, that term would only be for this meeting.
Yeah.
Why don't we just continue with you as the vice chair?
Makes sense to me, but I don't want to be a power grabber. Okay. So I call the meeting to order. And all commissioners are present. Are there any agenda changes?
No, there are not.
All right, and we'll enter into the public comment period. This is a public comments for matters that are not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Each member of the public making a comment can speak for five minutes if they so wish. Mr. Infusino.
Sorry. Tom Infusino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. The county can do more to avoid the 25 significant impacts of the general plan update on the built-in natural environments. Fortunately, throughout the general plan update process, local people, regional organizations, and state agencies have been providing the county with lists of mitigation options to reduce these impacts. It's simply up to the planning commission and the board of supervisors to direct the planning department to properly tailor these programs for Calaveras County. For one example, adopting the mitigation suggestions of the agriculture coalition would reduce the impacts from agricultural land conversion. For a second example, adopting the historic preservation policies suggested by local experts would mitigate impacts to historic and cultural resources. For a third example, conforming the circulation element policies in the... To the policies in the 2017 Regional Transportation Plan developed by the Calaveras Council governments will reduce impacts of the plan on traffic safety, traffic congestion, pedestrian safety, and open space. For a fourth example, completing and adopting the draft Parks and Recreation Master Plan developed by the Calaveras County Parks and Recreation Commission would mitigate recreation impacts. For a fifth example, the existing community plans that are eliminated as part of the proposed general plan update contain many measures that have mitigated impacts for years and could continue to do so. I could go on and on. You can consult the memo I sent you on Monday for more examples, but I think you get the general idea. Many different local and regional public agencies, private organizations, and individuals suggested suitable mitigation measures to reduce the impacts of the general plan update. This reflects a broad understanding that adopting these measures will promote the broader public good in Calaveras County. The CPC encourages the planning commission to recommend to the board of supervisors to adopt these measures when they approve the general plan update. As we move toward the conclusion of this long process, we ask you to dig deep, finish strong, and make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question of Mr. Infusino?
A question?
He said he had some addenda or exhibits or whatever that you were going to bring to the meeting.
Yep, you may answer the question.
Have you already given them out? I just missed it.
Oh, we sent... On Monday, there was a 12-page email, and I do need to make an apology about that. I was hoping to provide the county with the attachments to that email. Unfortunately, they're electronic, and the county does not accept flash drives or CDs. So I'm going to have to find a way to break it into email-sized attachments and then send those following. Also, I'm working on getting our computer person at the coalition to upload it to our website. The county cannot download it from the website, but you all could at least access it that way.
I have a question. Of all the pages of materials that your organization has supplied, can you do some sort of a cross-reference? Your most recent memo, you know, gives us gives us a framework of things we can look at, but if you could also give us references to the materials that you have already supplied to see where we can read up further on that? That would be helpful.
I will do that. And just so you know, most of the attachments, in fact, are those sorts of things.
Right.
References to the comments on the draft DIR, references to scope and comments.
Oh, okay.
And those are the attachments, which is why they're big and which is why they're hard to email. So we're having... Well, I apologize for technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Marty Crane, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. The good news is that the county will not be alone in financing general plan programs to reduce the impacts of development. The county can use state and federal funding to mitigate these impacts and improve the county in the future. For example, the draft general plan, DEIR, identifies potentially significant impacts to agricultural lands. However, if the general plan included an agricultural land component consistent with government code requirements for policy commitments, measurable objectives, and specific implementation measures, then the county would get priority in funding from the State Department of Conservation. In addition, the state currently has an agricultural land conservation program funded by cap and trade revenues. Also, the USDA has over 30 programs providing loans, grants, and technical assistance to rural communities to improve their economic viability and thereby maintain their agricultural and forest lands in future production. These include grants for value-added producers, energy efficiency, community facilities, water supply and wastewater treatment, broadband services, and workforce housing. By actively participating in these grant programs, the county can help keep Calaveras County agriculturally productive and competitive in the 21st century. As a second example, the draft general plan, DEIR, identifies significant impacts associated with roads, traffic, and with greenhouse gas emissions. However, some of these impacts could be mitigated if the county participated in the State of California's planning grant programs to promote sustainable communities and to help communities adapt transportation systems to address climate change. The identified projects could then seek funding through the Caltrans Local Assistance Program. As a third example, the draft general plan, DEIR, indicates that the county will need to expand water and wastewater infrastructure to meet the needs of new development, but it does not identify where the money will come from for these expansions. The California Department of Water Resources has an integrated water management grant program that provides bond funds to our region, including its disadvantaged communities, to maintain and improve water and sewer infrastructure. The county currently participates in this program. The general plan update needs to commit to continue to seek these funds to meet these needs. As a fourth example, the draft general plan, DEIR, identifies a significant impact associated with fire safety. CAL FIRE administers grant programs to improve forest health, address tree mortality, and to promote fire safety in communities. The general plan update needs to commit, again, to seeking these funds to meet local fire safety needs. As Tom mentioned, we could go on and on and on. There are so many opportunities and so many helpful places to go for funding regarding the energy production and conservation funds and wildlife habitat funds. But as Tom said, you get the idea. Please recommend that the board of supervisors commit to seeking these funds to help mitigate the impacts of development when they approve the general plan update. Thank you.
I have a question on that. Does your organization's comments in response to the draft EIR, do they spell out these available funds?
They will... They will... Tom could address the specifics of those. They will definitely be made available. Oh, they'll definitely be made available, but as far as the specifics of where they are, I think Tom could better address that.
But it hasn't already been disclosed as part of the comment or the responses. I have a feeling, from the back of the room, that they have.
Yes. Yes, thank you. That's what I'm saying. I think they're all included. We've been working on it for a long time.
Thanks.
My name is Joyce Tekel. I'm president of myvalleysprings.com, and we are a member of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. During the general plan update, some have suggested that the county must not participate in state and federal programs. They have argued that by not participating in these programs, the taxes of our local residents will decline. However, there is no direct connection between the tax rate we pay in Calaveras County and our participation in government programs. Calaveras County taxpayers are not sent a tax rebate check simply because the Calaveras County does not participate in these programs. These spending programs are already in the state and federal budgets. If the money is not spent in Calaveras County, it will be spent somewhere else. People concerned with public spending are welcome to go to Sacramento and to Washington, D.C. to change the laws, to put these programs in place that put these programs in place or to reduce the spending on these programs. Good luck with that. However, as long as these state and federal programs exist and as long as the spending is annually allocated to be spent somewhere, there is no benefit to Calaveras County taxpayers associated with Calaveras County not participating in these programs. The Department of Labor estimates that the average American household pays $5,700 in federal income taxes. The average Californian household pays an additional $4,888 in state and local taxes. Thus, the 17,713 households in Calaveras County pay a total of about $187 million in state, federal, and local taxes each year. By participating in the programs noted above, Calaveras County can get back some of our state and federal tax dollars and put them to good use in our communities. Please recommend that the board of supervisors commit to seeking these funds to help mitigate the impacts of development when they approve the general plan update. We need that money back.
Thank you. Do you want to sign in?
Yes. Neil McEwen. Good morning, commissioners. I'm speaking on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Compliance with SEQA at the general plan level can facilitate both economic development and environmental protection. By mitigating the significant environmental impacts of development at the general plan level, the county would expedite lawful future approvals of specific plans, subdivisions, and use permits. State law mandates the mitigation of impacts identified in the general plan that are likely to occur. Projects that require discretionary approval of specific plans, subdivisions, and use permits are all held to the same standard. Providing the option of compliance with standards that mitigate development impacts both facilitates project approvals while protecting health, safety, welfare, and the environment. Everyone benefits by knowing exactly what is needed to secure project approval. Businesses will find it less risky to invest in locating here and when they can trust in the rule of law and property rights... Sorry. Businesses will find it less risky to invest in locating here when they can trust in the rule of law and property rights. Local taxpayers benefit because of the increased efficiencies in county staff's project review and approval capacity. Concerns regarding community issues will be mitigated prior to conflict. The planning commission and the board of supervisors will both benefit, stand to benefit, because they will have the informed, lawful foundation for guiding the necessary choices required to approve housing and business development. Please look at the recommendation of one of the county's outside legal councils on land use and SEQA, James Moose, senior partner of Remy Moose in Manley. His guide indicates that adopting clear language in a general plan can help streamline future project reviews and approvals. During this process, it has been argued that regulations and fees impede economic development. However, detailed general plans and high-impact fees have not stopped economic development in the region. Eldorado County, despite having a detailed general plan and traffic impact mitigation fees of up to $13,000 per home from 2000 to '09, produced over 15,000 units of housing and 5 million square feet of non-residential job-generating land uses. Calaveras County has tried the virtually nonexistent regulation approach for decades. The result is a county with an average home value that is $150,000 below the statewide average. It is time for the county to try to specify development and impact mitigation standards to give all the members of this community hope for a more vibrant future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Colleen Platt, and I'm with... I'm a member of the myvalleysprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Welcome to all new and returning planning commissioners, and thank you for your service. My comments today are about the general plan draft, EIR, and are on behalf of both Joyce Tekel and myself. Last week before the board of supervisors, planning director Maurer's use of the phrase, quote, "inevitable litigation," unquote, in discussing the updated general plan caused us great concern. I haven't read many news articles dealing with lawsuits against general plans. For example, in recent years, San Joaquin County completed a general plan update with no reported lawsuits. The two suits I know of involved Eldorado County and Amador County. Both counties chose not to listen to public input. In Amador, the people sued, and Amador County went to settlement. Amador ended up paying the citizens' legal costs. It lost them a year, and they ended up agreeing to adopt the citizens' suggestions that were offered before the lawsuit. And as Tom Infusino told the board of supervisors at their meeting last week, Mariposa County also listened to suggestions, fixed their plan, and there was no lawsuit. My friends and I have been trying to help the county avoid a lawsuit over the general plan update for 12 years. Now we are told the county will pass this plan now and will fix it later. Really? Why? Is Calaveras County willing to end up in court rather than produce a legally defensible plan? We don't think the citizens of Calaveras will accept this. Litigation is not inevitable. Please fix the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on matters that are not on the agenda today? In which case, we'll move on to the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from the December 30th, 2018, planning commission meeting, which I was not there for. So I won't be voting on it. Any suggested changes to those minutes?
Just the identification of who's going to sign them. I expect that would be you.
I guess, even though I wasn't there, I won't vote on the approval of the minutes, but I can sign it.
I don't have any suggestions for changes.
Anybody else? Anybody else meaning you?
You does not have any suggestions.
Well, which brings up an interesting question. I think we can have the two members that were there approve the minutes, but don't we have to have a... Three people contribute in order to do anything?
You know what? This is something I wasn't prepared for.
I haven't done that either.
You know, I... We could always take the position that if somebody had a problem with the minutes that isn't here and is no longer serving, they would have provided any information. I don't know that we have any information about something wrong in the minutes, so I think we need to wing it.
Well, that's what a vice chair is here for. It seems to me that since we do have two people who were here and who often give very close attention to these things, and we have no objections to the minutes as read, I'm willing to take part in approving the minutes based on the contributions from those people who were here.
And we should take public comment in case anybody else knows something.
Anybody have any comments on our... What... Where are the railroads going right now? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from the last meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was there anybody not taking part? Abstain? Abstain?
I think we should have three... I think we should have three votes, even though...
You have three votes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Yeah. All right, the minutes are approved. By golly. We move on now to the first public hearing, number 2015-011. Extension of time for approval, administrative use permit 2015-011 for the Calaveras Healthy Impacts Products Solutions, CHIPS facility. So we'll first hear from the... From the planning department. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Madeline Flanjo, Planner 2. Today I'm presenting the extension of time for administrative use permit 2015-011 for the Calaveras Healthy Impacts Product Solutions Facility, which is also known as CHIPS. The applicant is requesting an extension of time to extend the expiration date of approved administrative use permit 2015-011. Mr. Steve Walinski, who is board chair of CHIPS, is here if you have any questions for him. On June 23rd, 2017, the planning director approved the administrative use permit to operate a community-scale 3-megawatt biomass combined heat and power facility. The site, which is APN 012-011-014, is located at the eastern edge of the Calaveras County Water District's West Point Facility in Wilseyville. The facility is designed to create electricity, heat, and biochar through gasification of woody biomass feedstock primarily collected from forest-sourced biomass. And the electricity produced by the facility is intended to be sold to PG&E on their distribution-level circuit. The administrative use permit was approved for 18 months, and as this permit required a building permit to construct the facility, the building permit needed to be obtained, and construction commenced prior to expiration of the AUP on December 31st, 2018. The applicant applied for the extension of time on October 5th, 2018, requesting a one-year extension of the permit. An initial study was prepared and a mitigated negative declaration was approved on June 23rd, 2017 by the planning director at the time of the approval of the administrative use permit. So no further SEQA documentation is required to grant an extension to the permit. And this is discussed further in the January 15th, 2019 addendum to the staff report, which explains the SEQA requirements for an extension of time. So per county code, section 17.90.020 for extension of time, the planning commission shall not approve an extension of time unless it makes all the following findings. Number one, the extension of time is necessary to secure needed approvals from other agencies. And two, the extension of time is necessary in order to comply with conditions of project approval. And three, the permit holder has demonstrated a good faith effort to initiate the use for which the permit has been issued. Evidence for finding number one, a building permit is required to validate the AUP. CHIPS has been working with PG&E since February of 2017 to secure a power purchase agreement, which provides the basis for the investments necessary to build the biomass plant. However, the agreement between CHIPS and PG&E wasn't actually entered into until June 6th of 2018, and Mr. Walinski can further explain what all happened with that. All other permits must be obtained prior to issuance of the building permit. An additional time is necessary to secure the remaining approvals, including a final inspection for the encroachment permit from Public Works necessary to obtain a building permit. For finding two, additional time is necessary to allow the applicant to secure funding for the project and complete all the outstanding conditions required for a... for the project and complete all the outstanding conditions required for obtaining a building permit to complete the project. Finding three, to date, the applicants have secured the power purchase agreement with PG&E to purchase power generated by the facility. This PPA and an interconnection agreement with PG&E is necessary in order for CHIPS to secure their project funding. CHIPS initially submitted a PPA application with PG&E on February 27th, 2017, however, as I said, it wasn't signed until June 6th of 2018. The applicants have been working very diligently to complete the permit conditions specifically from Public Works, removing all the hazards left over from the old associated office lumber mill, and constructing an asphalt apron at the intersection of the site entrance and the county road, as well as repairing the access road to the project site. And Mr. Walinski is currently working with the Public Works Department to secure, to schedule the final inspection for the encroachment permit. So as stated, the work necessary to complete the conditions approval is extension, is extensive, and the timeframe in which they had to complete the work was very limited. Therefore, it's pretty clear that the applicants have worked diligently toward the completion of the conditions until delays occurred with securing the agreement with PG&E, which delayed the project funding. And that's my presentation. Questions?
I've got a question.
Of course.
The staff report indicates, and I think you just said, that the applicant has to obtain approval of all the other permits prior to the issuance of a building permit. Is that a code requirement, or where does that come from?
It's a requirement of the building permit application process, so you have to sign off from fire department and, you know, all the other agencies that are associated with that application. In some cases, the permits can run concurrently, so typically, an encroachment permit could be, you know, done in the work at the same time, but in this case, due to sort of the unique circumstance of this project, that encroachment needs to be put in first in order to allow access for construction equipment and those kinds of things. So, and again, as Madeline pointed out, that that purchase agreement with PG&E was really sort of the key to the whole project, so it didn't make sense to apply for the building permit until that funding source and to make sure that the project itself was viable was completed. So, for the most part, those are just simply a matter of practice, not necessarily code, but in order to issue the building permit, we need to make sure that all other agencies have approved and signed off on their aspect of the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Department? We will hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Chair Ladish, and welcome new, new commission members. It's quite a day, and I'm sure this kind of complex project could be overwhelming to a first-day commissioner.
We got the minutes approved.
By the way, that was impressive. And I wish our project was as simple. There are a number of things not in the record before you that I'd like to appraise you of, and also request that our original, originally, we requested one-year extension, assuming that we would be beginning construction right about now. There are a couple of intervening facts that have made that impossible, and I'd like to go over that a bit with you. Not described, you heard the power purchase agreement. That, by the way, took two Public Utilities Commission hearings and appeals. There were delays of over a year in a legislatively mandated statutory requirement that PG&E do the biomat auction. We went through all of that, but in fact, they delayed it further and didn't implement it till the date that you see before you and you've got the document. So at least we've got that piece, the power purchase agreement in place, and it's a 20-year agreement, which allows stable funding. Most power purchase agreements, and the reason a lot of biomass plants have closed, were only two to three years, sometimes as much as five, but at the end of them, they were not renewed. Nobody's going to invest in that kind of thing in a small community like Willseville, so we needed that length of time and an agreement that showed that with a funding, with an amount that would break even at least, and that's what we've achieved. The second thing that we thought would be almost instant and easy to do was the interconnection study and its implementation with a, an interconnection agreement. I'm pleased to say that last week, we got, or the week before last now, we got a final agreement, and it is waiting lawyer review to sign, but it meets the, there was a significant dispute as to how much it would cost. Our original study showed that it would be 1.2 million PG&E. However, because the extension on the power purchase agreement took so long, they then required a second interconnection study just in case things had changed dramatically in Willseville. As you probably know, not... However, we did discover that in the new study, they had added approximately $800,000 to the original cost, and we had to go through an appeals process that ended a couple of weeks ago, in which it finally became clear that they had routed our electricity and the shut-off mechanisms through their hydro plants and had added about $500,000 of repairs that needed to be done on those plants to do this. They also routed the shut-off through Valley Springs. In fact, we were able to prove that for a mere $8,000, we could put the necessary equipment on site, and they finally acceded to that and reduced it back to about 1.25 million we then agreed, and so the documents are before us. We have to have both of those documents to be able to tell funders that we're ready to go. And of course, anybody who's studied the PG&E system and current circumstance knows that it's not an easy bet to make. And the most recent bankruptcy has led to skid, we're talking to people in a variety of places with new technologies that are pretty exciting, but very few of them are, know a lot about PG&E. One comes from Ireland, one comes from Germany and Austria, one comes from Tennessee, one comes from San Francisco, so there. But all of them know that something hinky's going on, and that makes the negotiations for $24 million of funding a little bit more complicated and probably more time-consuming. That said, we're in advanced negotiations. We do have an offer sheet that we're reviewing at the moment, and we're hoping that we can complete this before anything really untoward happens. It's hard to hitch your wagon to the PG&E pony at a moment like this, but we are assured by our attorneys that because we are legislatively mandated, that we will do quite well in the bankruptcy proceedings, but that is going to take some time to be adjudicated. All of that adds up to my request that you not only give us an extension of one year, but that you give us a two-year extension. That's the maximum allowable. There are normally as many as, under the ordinance, I believe, two extensions that you can get, but in no circumstance can they add up to more than two years. We still hope to begin construction this spring, and if this offer sheet comes to fruition in a, in a true agreement, we should be knowing this within the next couple of weeks, we would be off and running. Let me add one further complication, which might interest you. The U.S. Department of Commerce invited us to submit a grant, which we have done. It is about as thick as the, as the, what documents are here on the desk, but we submitted that only to find the government shutting down, and the U.S. Department of Commerce is not able to respond to this in a timely way. We expected that money, which is about $1.8 million, to be available in March, which is why we had, we could have implemented all the mitigations that are required by the county through our environmental and AUP process. I do want to assure you, however, that some of the things that are required are already in our possession, so I wanted to, and you're welcome to read through any of this exciting stuff in your spare time. This is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which was required, which we commissioned. We have environmental phases one and two, which were completed, and then the follow-ups required by the Planning Department on a couple of questions. The monkey flower rule-out, which had to wait until spring to be this last, oh no, it's two springs ago, but the, that, that had to be ruled out at a particular time of year, which was done, and there's a separate report on that. In addition, there was a rumor that a spotted owl was sighted within five miles of the site, so we did a site rule-out and paid about $10,000 to rule out the possibility that a spotted owl had landed in a former mill site. By the way, we are converting a closed lumber mill. Our area is devastated economically by ultimately the closure of 22 mills over a long period of time. It left our communities, the Blue Mountain communities devastated. 94% of our kids, when we started this project, were on free and reduced lunch. The social and mayhem index was extreme, and people thought we were communities of ill repute because we had been left for practically dead with very little economic activity post-logging. So the goal of CHIPS, and the reason we formed 14, 13 years ago, was to put our people back to work and to restore forests, be good stewards of our watershed, try to get some carbon sequestered. You've got a little cheat sheet in front of you, I think, with, with the benefits of biomass, but we decided to do this some time ago. And we have an unusual business model. We're a community organization. We do not have, we have 42 full-time employees doing forest meadow, cultural site, watershed restorations, so their employed would be year-round except for the government shutdown, but we, but we've been doing all the work of fuel procurement and setting up two master stewardship agreements, working in four U.S. forests, having our people work in Yosemite National Park. This is, it took a long time to get all of that done, so we want to assure you on the finding that we've done due diligence. We have brought over $18 million into this county, the previously mentioned fire safe councils, the CAL FIRE grants, the carbon money in California. We've brought a lot of that as part of our activities into this county. We also, this is now eight years ago, we won a national competition to be part of the Collaborative Forest Landscape Restoration Act, and $15 million has come to this county in Amador as a result of that. That's why you see all the burn piles up Highway 4, on View 88, all the way up 88. That's CHIPS. That's our work, and we're very proud of it, but we also know, and this is the key part of this, is that you cannot, and we started out on $7,500 a year of grants, and we knew that that's no way to survive or sustain the level of activity, let alone increase the pace and scale. So we know these things. Number one, it takes a diversified forest economy to be able to be sustainable and not dependent on grants or government funding. We have moved from a grant operation to now, six years ago, we are completely, our field operations are completely program income, and involve numerous activities, both on private and public lands, including the Butte Fire Restorations and all the previously mentioned work at BLM and U.S. Forests. The second thing we know is that doing field work doesn't pay a whole lot. It's not sustainable in the long run, and that it needs subsidy or support, and our view of it is that this biomass plant is that, that you have to do something besides burn the wood, what's called wood waste, and the idea of producing three megawatts of power and producing heat and biochar, which is an important, actually is found to be useful, there's a recent study that we were very excited about, that it turns out that if you feed cattle feed with biochar included, it actually reduces methane, which is a pretty cool study, but the other things it's used for, biochar, is to purify water and for soil amendments, which a number of the agricultural interests in this county and others are keenly interested in, and right now it's selling for $1.10 per pound in Calaveras County. That's actually going to be worth as much or more than the power that we'll be producing. Anyway, I could go on and on about this. I've lived it for a lot of years, but I can tell you, I can certainly tell you that the volunteers who have made this happen in Calaveras County are not going anywhere, that we will be here to finish this project, come hell or high water, or maybe our kids will, but there is going to be a power plant in, in Willseville, no matter what the conditions and no matter what winds up with PG&E. We're, we're here to sustain the course and bring this home. As I said in my memo to you, we know we're not breaking land speed records on the construction, but that doesn't mean we are unserious or any less determined than we were 13 years ago when this project launched. I'm pleased to answer any questions. I would be happy to share, this is only about half the file, but too many pounds...
Do you have 12 copies of that?
No, but the Planning Department does.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. In my experience, a project like this has so many challenges, and a building permit is the least of them. The building is the least of the project, and the permit process for the building is, you know, simple and straightforward. It's just all these environmental issues and public works issues that are the big challenge. Is that true for your project?
In our experience so far, yes, but we, we await with bated breath the process through the Building Department, but what we've done so far, I think, has overcome about 90% of the work that we expected and expense. It's cost us in the neighborhood of $400,000 to bring it to this, this stage.
I would never have expected that you could have completed those conditions in 18 months. I mean, to me, the extension was a foregone conclusion. I mean, it would have been a superpower.
Well, we wish we'd had you on our board at the time. You're, you're right that it, it took longer, but we had the advantage of SB 1122, which was a legislative intervention that said this would be important to rural communities in California, especially those that were threatened with fire, and so we had that legislative, we were participating in the creation of SB 1122, and when it did pass, we had made some assumptions that a public utility or privately-owned utility would be required to obey and follow the law as prescribed. It took four years from the time SB 1122 was passed to even have the auction that set up the price, the price per kilowatt of the, of power, four years, and a number of PUC hearings and a process that I won't even begin to describe. So, so that was daunting, and then an even more complex process reared its head, which we thought would be simply a study. Instead, it was two studies and appeals and a lengthy time just to do the interconnection agreement. So, you're right, we underestimated the complexity and the length of time. However, we were relying on the best attorneys in the state on the subject. We met with the Governor's Office and the Resources Department. We have spent a great deal of time with the PUC, and we were getting, we, we made our decisions to... decisions to file based on, on the advice that we got at the time.
And, and it looks like you wouldn't have had, that, that's the legal length that they could have had the administrative use permit run anyway, so there's nothing you could have done about it.
If you want to know a dark secret, a dark CHIPS secret, we thought the idea was so compelling and the need so great that, and this was thirteen years ago, we estimated that two to three years at the outside to, to build it. And we've learned a lot since then.
Steve, what's the situation with PG&E right now? Have they actually filed yet?
Uh, no, and that's one of the problems, is that we don't know exactly what their filing is going to entail. Will it exclude, for instance, and there's some discussions in the governor's office about trying to steer this to at least not, not make all of the power production in California in jeopardy? That's, that's really not a good way to have a utility go bankrupt. So many of the utility bankruptcies are different than what you'd consider to be the standard business bankruptcy because of the public need. And, and we, we've gotten, now I've talked to four attorneys, some of them in national law firms, and at least one of them a specialist in, in the utility bankruptcy. And what they're saying is, number one, we can't give you any assurance until we actually see the bankruptcy, but that you are in a very, in, in the kind of pole position on, on the people affected that will be most likely to come out of it all right. So I'm not sure I take anybody's word or advice, given our experience, to the bank, but in this case, I'm having to, because we are right in the middle of these negotiations for, for $24 million of funding. So I, I, I can't really answer your question until we see further, but I can tell you that the best attorneys in California relating to this subject are in our court and ready to act when we need.
Just as a matter of clarification, the agreement as of June 6, 2018, that was the interconnectivity agreement with PG&E? No?
No, that was the power purchase agreement. And the good news is that we achieved more than we thought, because nobody else actually struck what they call striking in the biomat auction until it reached 19.972 cents. And we were the second, believe it or not, out of all the applicants, we were the second in California to meet all of the requirements to get into the auction in the first place. So we were in a great position, and it's hard to believe that a group of volunteers, all the rest of them had counties or large entities behind them. We did this ourselves, and we were the second to, to get in, in the, to finish our auction and our power purchase agreement.
But then just, just within the last couple of weeks, then you've had the, what, the study approved, you, you now have a...
No, we have, we have a signed agreement, which is in your packet, that says, that PG&E for twenty years has to give us 19.972 cents per kilowatt. That's what the agreement is. It's signed by PG&E, you'll see the document, and it's signed by us. So that's in, that, that's in the bank.
What I, I oppose the question as a question not, isn't it true that? June 6, 2018 was one date, and then within the last couple of weeks, you've gotten a, a more, I guess, the question is, at this point, do you have all the agreements you need from PG&E?
We have, the, the second one that was required was the interconnection. This is where, how are you going to connect your power to the grid? And SB 1122 requires us to connect it to the PG&E part of the grid. We would have liked to see whether smud would. But that, the interconnection would have been many miles, and we have a, a very nice place to connect to right in Willseville because of the old power plant, or the old mill site. So that, it had to be studied twice, and each one cost $10,000, which we paid. And then they came up with an amount, as I described, that was way more than it should have been, and we finally won our appeals and review, and so there is a final document that is sitting on my desk. But the problem with that is that the impending, it requires us to put down a very large sum of money. And our lawyers are suggesting that we wait until the filing to make sure that that money will be well-spent. So that's what's hanging it up.
So there, it isn't all final, but it's on your desk?
Right, it's waiting for my signature. It has theirs, but, but mine is required to complete it, and I've been advised to hold off for at least a week until we can analyze the, the bankruptcy documents.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Is this now a two-year request?
I'm, I am requesting, and I don't, I, I think it's within your prerogative to, to increase it to two, but I'd rather not be back in a year in case things go poorly with PG&E.
The code does allow a two-year, a maximum of two years of extension. It can be one at a time or, or a single extension. They, it just advertises an extension, so it's not, we don't have a problem with the public notice. I don't have any concerns over granting two years. We'd need to make some minor amendments, and I'm prepared to do that when we conclude the public hearing to the resolution to make it two.
Does it, will it be two years from December 31st when the first one would have?
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you very much, and thank you for all, all your efforts for all that time.
Thank you for your time and patience. I hope to be back before you with announcements about our building plans in the not-too-distant future, but thank you for your time.
You know, they do make wheeled luggage carriers.
Well, I was, I wondered if I brought the full file, but these were the things that I thought might be relevant. But thanks, I'll, you know, as we get our technology together, that might be a good addition.
So the next would be any public comments? Be five minutes per speaker, maximum, on this particular subject.
Marty Crane, I've been involved with the Volunteer Center.
Could you sign in again? Make sure we're...
Again?
Well, for this.
Sure.
Thank you.
I've been involved with the Volunteer Center since, like, 2000, somewhere back in there, and have had the opportunity to watch many community volunteers come together and do great things, and, and about the time I feel overwhelmed, they inspire the hell out of me. And Blue Mountain Coalition for Youth and Families, a, a big example. CHIPS, oh my stars. This is the most, one of the most amazing volunteer efforts that, I mean, dedicated, pushing forward, something happens, oh dear. They're back up in the saddle and going and, and never giving up because the mission is ever-present and so important. And they're an inspiration to everyone that pays attention to what they've been doing over the last fourteen, fifteen years. And I just wanted to say that when our volunteers become passionate about something that is needed in the community, and they go forth to be just as fabulous as they can be, sometimes they need a little assistance or a little guidance or a little pathway by way of the elected officials. And I appreciate that you get what they're doing and can provide that, because that's big. We can do this much, but we can do this much if we get a little assistance and working relationships with our electeds. So hats off, applaud, 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 CHIPS. Thank you so much. I'm inspired yet again, yet again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Katrine Lambie from West Point, BMCYF.
Please sign in, Katrine.
Having worked with the youth of the Blue Mountain area for many, many years, this project for me is really exciting, and thank you for supporting it, because one of the main things that is lacking for our youth is work, jobs. And this is an extraordinary opportunity. It gives hope to our kids. There will be work right there in our community already. Many young men are work, and women, actually, are working for CHIPS, and that has changed the lives of many young people in our area. And this COGEN plan will only take it another step further, so it's really exciting. Steve has done some tremendous amount of work and talk about being stubborn and dedicated. He beats everyone for that. So thank you for supporting this. We're really exciting to, excited to see this project move forward, even if it's moving slowly, we know we're going to get there. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? So any further comments from the department?
Well, if the commission is inclined to grant the two-year extensions requested, I would suggest that we revise the, previously revised resolution, the one that was in the addendum on January 15th, changing the title of the top from one to two.
Well, shall we, let's, let's, let's get on, when we get to the resolution, let's, let's do that. Let me all in order. Does anybody on the commission have follow-up questions to the department? And I'll close the public hearing, and now we'll have discussion by the commission, and we can, we can discuss possible changes to the resolution as part of this, and then you can present the resolution.
Okay.
So, back to you.
All right. So as I was saying, amend the, the top, changing it from one to two, I would recommend adding another whereas, about the, after the fifth one down, insert, this would be after, whereas on October 5th, there'd be a new statement, whereas the applicant requested that the extension of time be granted for two years at the planning commission hearing. And then, under be it therefore resolved, change one to two.
And any other discussion by the commission? And let's open our, we can open our comments to the resolution also at this point.
I have one other suggestion on the resolution, which is on page two, under paragraph three for the evidence. I would add, at the very beginning of that, see evidence under two above, because that applies equally to paragraph three. And I would just say I'm in favor of a two-year extension.
And where does the two-year extension?
Paragraph three where the bold evidence, right after the colon, say, see evidence under two above.
Okay. We've got a revised resolution.
I'm working off the revised one.
Yeah. I would suggest that we add, after the whereas that speaks of the initial study, which, which was added in this revision, here you can look on me, I'd add another whereas, saying, whereas, comma, the review period for this mitigated negative declaration has expired, Which makes it clear that we really can't reconsider the negative declaration. Then I have a question. I don't understand on the next whereas. Whereas the administrative use permit was approved for eighteen months with an expiration date of December 31st, 2018, why do we need the four eighteen months? Because eighteen months from the effective date of the resolution was before December 31st, 2018.
And it's actually the end of the year following, right?
We could certainly just strike that for eighteen months. It's unnecessary. It was more for informational purposes, I suppose, because the code says it expires on December 31st of the year following approval.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion or suggestions on the resolution?
I didn't quite catch it, but you did change the one year to two years in two places?
Yes. Oh, and at the very, the very first whereas, whereas the proposed project is located on real property and the unincorporated portions of the county of Calaveras, more particularly described as APN 012, 011, 014, I would just, I'd cross out the is after that, which does not by itself make sense. Just have a comma after the 014 and cross out the is.
Can I just clarify really quickly? The, I'm sorry, Chair Lattish, when I was striking the eighteen months, am I changing that, the whereas the administrative use permit expired on December 31st, 2018?
No, no, just the, where, just strike out four eighteen months.
Okay.
And then it all makes sense. Any other deliberation or discussion by the commissioners? Now would you like to present your recommendation?
So the planning department recommends that the planning commission pass a motion to sign resolution 2019-002 as amended, approving the extension of time for administrative use permit 2015-011.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? It's unanimous approval for the two-year extension. And thank you very much, and get back to your desk, you've got a lot to do.
Yeah. Get out that.
And I think we'll, we'll take a break until 10:20 and come back for the second item. So we call the meeting back to order, please. The next item is 2018-069, Appeal of a Planning Director Determination involving the Accepted Farming Practices and Commercial Agriculture. And Peter, you're going to be handling this?
Yes, thank you. So this is, I've cited in the agenda, an appeal of my determination on what constitutes accepted farming practice and commercial agriculture. In particular, it applies to the R1 zone that identifies that commercial, or accepted farming practice is a use permitted by right in the zone, while commercial agriculture requires a conditional use permit. The property owner had desire to plant an olive orchard on property zoned R1 and rec, and I had made the determination that that would require a conditional use permit based on my interpretation of the definitions and the purpose of the R1 zone. So as pointed out in the staff report, the Accepted Farming Practice means a land use to produce plant and animal products using customary, safe, and adequate techniques for crop management, harvesting, and marketing. Commercial agricultural is defined as a land use that meet, that, let me start over. Commercial agriculture means a land use that shall produce from agricultural production, not less than average annual gross income of $2,000 based upon prevailing... not less than average annual gross income of $2,000 based upon prevailing values. The appellant has raised the argument that it's not a matter of scale, whether or not you make $2,000 off the agricultural product, but that the activity is somehow a changing of the product or a commercial activity associated with the agricultural production, the actual raising of animals or crops, and not the raising of the crops or animals itself. I just, you know, could not find that that was a logical argument based on the information in the code. After the appeal was filed, I went back and looked at the administrative record, and it was clear to me that my interpretation was correct, that the intent of the board was to limit the scale of agricultural operations in the R1 zone. And the threshold that was chosen at that time was $2,000. The interpretation proposed by the appellant is very creative, but I think it ignores that legislative intent, and particularly the issue that was in place at the time that the ordinance was adopted. There were a lot of concerns about animal raising in residential zones. And if you go back through the record, you see that all the discussion was about livestock, livestock in residential zones. But at the time, the board combined the definition of Accepted Farming Practice and Accepting Ranching Practice into a single definition. So it included both horticultural activities as well as husbandry, animal husbandry. And there was a lot of talk about limits to what was going on. And so the, again, it seemed pretty clear to me, and if you look at the Planning Commission's staff report, and I had in the, had the staff report from 1987, when the ordinance was adopted, and I included a quote from that. "The proposed change will define commercial agriculture as a use generating gross average income in excess of $2,000 per year, and will allow commercial agriculture operations as a permitted use in the resource zones and as a conditional use, use permit required in all other zones." To me, that seems very clear, that any activity that would produce more than $2,000 from agricultural production, not from something that changed after it was produced, that was the intent of the ordinance. It's inartfully worded, I can't argue with that. It's, you know, there are so many things in our code that need fixing, and this is one of those. But I think, again, the issue here is, was there intent to limit the amount of agricultural activity in a residential zone? And it seemed clear to me that it was, even though there was some creative interpretation of what, you know, produced from means, the legislative intent seems very clear to me that there was desire by the board to limit the potential conflict between large-scale agricultural operations in the residential zone compared to, you know, a 4-H project or someone's, you know, fruit trees in their backyard kind of activity. Do you have any questions with me?
Looking at the file, it seemed like the proposed use was continuation of grazing on this property, which you pointed out was grandfathered in.
Yes.
And if that were the case, I wouldn't see any need for a decision on this interpretation point. Now I think I'm hearing that the proposed use is an olive orchard?
There had been some previous conversation between the property owner and our office about the possibility of placing an olive orchard. And so while the response to the email that was included in the, in the staff report, in the packet, talked about the continued operation of grazing, the issue of an olive orchard was something that we had discussed previously. So yes, that was, that's really the issue here, is whether or not we could change the agricultural operation to some other use other than what's been ongoing on that property for many, many years.
Now, if you, if you had an orchard or a vineyard on this property that produced fruit and, or nuts or grapes or whatever, that had a value of over $2,000 but wasn't sold, it was consumed by the people who own it, would that be a commercial use?
I think that. I think that you'd actually have to produce that income. So you would have to sell it in order for it to become commercial agriculture.
Okay, I think so too.
I had that same question, and I went back and read through everything, and I took it to be that you would have to sell it because, I'm sorry. You would have to sell it because it has no value until you sell, I mean, no monetary value until you sell it.
Well, I would disagree with that, in that, I think the language of the ordinance is really quite clear, in that commercial agriculture means a land use, which would be an olive orchard, that shall, which under Webster's Third International Dictionary is defined as, is going to, going to produce from agricultural production, such as production of olives, not less than an average annual gross income of $2,000 based on prevailing market values. That determination, based upon prevailing market values, is to be projected, well, let's put it this way, by using the word shall and based upon prevailing market values, it's clear to me that the ordinance is looking at the situation at the time the orchard is to be planted. And just as we don't want to have a golf course spring into being and then later have to deal with all the experience of dealing with a golf course, we don't want to have a commercial-scale olive orchard spring into being with all the environmental effects that it might have, and without requiring the permit. So it seems to me that at the time, it's intended to develop such a large agricultural project. You apply the test that the, that the ordinance provides, is it going to, it shall produce from agricultural production, average annual gross income of $2,000 based on prevailing market values? Based on prevailing market values is not actual income once you've sold the stuff, it's how valuable is it going to be? So I really, I really feel that this, this is a well-drafted ordinance that anticipates the problems of not wanting people to make large environmental impacts on property and develop what then might give rise to a $2,000 a year income without requiring a permit at the inception.
So I don't mean to interrupt Mr. Chair, but I think that before we get into deliberation discussion, we probably should open it for public hearing and hear from the appellant.
Yes, but I just want to give you, give you a signal where I'm coming from. Now, and this issue arose because the appellant here asked whether a large olive grove would require, if you would tell us just how the issue arose and what were appealing, what the appeal is from?
Yes, we have an approved project, residential project, and the owners had expressed an interest in planting an olive orchard, as sort of an interim use, while they were working towards the completion of the tentative map conditions and the filing of final maps. And after looking at the review, we indicated that we felt that required a conditional use permit.
And that's a, you issue a ruling, and that that could be appealed from?
Yes, the code requires that any deter, any decision made by the planning director can be appealed to the planning commission. This is similar to, in a way, what happened back with the asphalt plants several years ago, where I made a determination and.
Well, I think it's commendable that the, that the appellant asked the question, so we could go through all this procedure before that was.
Fuck you.
Yes. Okay, is there, are there any other questions for the department? In that case, we will proceed to the appellant.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bill Abbott, I'm the author of the appeal. And I do appreciate the fact that obviously the commissioners have taken the opportunity to, to think through this interpretation issue. I have great respect for Mr. Mauer, I've known him for many, many years, but there are times in which lawyers and planners will disagree, and this is one of those. And I respect his experience and his professional judgment. That said, please hear me out. What we're not doing today is trying to figure out what the code ought to be, what it should have done, or what the board could have adopted. We're dealing with the four corners of the definitions. And to start with, the definition of Accepted Agricultural Practices has no limitation on what kind of agricultural endeavor you can undertake. There is no limitation on size, and it expressly permits marketing. That's within the definition. The only thing that the Board of Supervisors put as a limitation in the definition of Accepted Agricultural Practices is that it followed basically safe and conventional practices. Those are the only words of limitation. They didn't, for example, put a limitation of you can't sell it. They didn't put a limitation that says, this has to be a hobby farm. You can't sell to your neighbors, you can't sell, you can't have some kind of commercial endeavor. So it's, it's a very expansive and accommodating definition in terms of what constitutes an Accepted Agricultural Use, Accepted Agricultural Practice. The word, now, jumping to the definition on commercial agriculture, notice that the wording is different, and the chair, I reached a different conclusion than the chair, but it doesn't, if it really meant any commercial activity, would have said any commercial retail activity. But it talks about a land use that's, that's different. I think you have to give recognition to that phrase. You can't read it out of the definition. So the Board of Supervisors in 1987 purposely put that phrase in there, and you, and you've got to reconcile those two code sections. I think our interpretation, not to pat myself on the back, is entirely reasonable. It explains how you can accommodate the two provisions. Because, you know, and, and an orchard by itself, I think, meets the definition, even if it's going to be sold to wholesalers, meets the definition, definition of a type of crop that can be an Accepted Agricultural Practice. But if you want to put in a tasting room, if you want to put in a retail, that's a land use that generates more than $2,000 from the agricultural activity. So I, with all due respect to Mr. Mauer's interpretation, I think that our interpretation reconciles those two sections and conforms with the express wording that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. I have had a chance, Mr. Mauer shared with me the 1987 file, it's devoted to livestock. There's no discussion of orchard. So I, to, with all due respect, I don't think the file tilts the meter today in terms of your job to interpret the code. I mean, it's, it's there, but not every historical file explains some of the mysteries in terms of the origin of the code. And it's clear that they dealt with, they were concerned with livestock, I'll acknowledge that. But the definition of Accepted Agricultural Practices was not a definition that's unique to the, to the R1 and REC districts. They made the same amendment across the board, as I read the file. So it wasn't, it wasn't a board's focus on R1 by itself, or REC districts by itself. So I think you have to look at it in the context that this is the definition that applies everywhere in the county. And essentially what you're saying, I mean, it, let's, let's be practical. The obligation to get a conditional use permit or discretionary approval involves a significant investment just in the process, and involves, I'm a land use lawyer, I've done this for 40 years. Anytime you go through discretionary review and a permit, you're at risk. So let's, to be realistic, it's a disincentive to significant agricultural investment in the county. So I think that's what's at stake in terms of this discussion. Beyond that, I think, you know, I appreciate that you've been asking all the right questions, and you've obviously read our materials. But I think that the ordinance as currently drafted can be, can be read more than one way. I think Mr. Mauer probably acknowledges that, or at least it's, it's not as precise as perhaps as we would like. But because it's not as precise as we would like, it lends itself to multiple interpretations. And I think our interpretation is internally consistent and explains the language difference between these two code sections. And with due respect to staff, I don't think their interpretation explains why the board put the language in the commercial definition. It talks about a land use which derives more than $2,000 from ag. It could have just said $2,000 from ag, but it's very specific, and you've got to have an, you know, we'd like an explanation as to what that phrase means, because we think that holds the key to how you reconcile the two code sections. So beyond that, be happy to answer any questions, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a question, a couple. I think you made it clear, and it seems clear, that there's no dollar limit in the definition of Accepted Farming Practices in terms of what gets produced.
Correct.
So if, if your interpretation were correct, if a person wanted to have a hog farm in an R1 zone using customary, safe, and adequate techniques, he could have 100 hogs in an R1 lot, couldn't he?
I don't know if that's separately regulated under the county code. I don't know your code that well. But it does not draw distinction. It's a, but the question is, is, we're not here today to figure out how the board should have drafted the code. We are here to determine what the board did draft and adopt in 1987.
Okay, if you, if you had a olive orchard there, and you had a retail outlet at the site that produced over $2,000 of income at prevailing market prices, you would agree that there would have to be a conditional use permit?
Yes, because it would be a land use, the, the sales component, the retail sales component, would be a land use which derives $2,000 from the underlying agricultural activity.
Okay, now if you have the same olive orchard, and you sell the same crop wholesale, somebody comes in a truck and carts it off, you're, under your interpretation, you would not need a CUP, correct?
That's correct.
So your interpretation means that it has to be converted into money at the site?
I think, to reconcile against the commercial, yes. Because the definition of Accepted specifically allows marketing. So it, the code contemplates a business enterprise. Why else would the board have put the word marketing in the definition of Accepted?
Okay, but if the guy drives up with his truck and he gives you a check, because you stole wholesale, you're saying it doesn't need a CUP? But if a bunch of retail customers come in and buy it in a jar, you, you don't.
I think.
Or you do.
Correct. If they, if they buy it on a, on a retail basis, if you're deriving the income onsite from a retail activity, you're driving it. But otherwise, what does the word marketing mean in the definition?
Well, to me, the reconcile is, the key is a $2,000 limit. Because it seems to me if you're selling it, whether it's retail or wholesale, from products produced on the premises, it's, it's both an Accepted Farming Practice and commercial use. And when you hit the $2,000 limit, that's where the board drew the line. And if you're going to have an olive orchard that produces over $2,000 in income, assuming, as I posited earlier, you're not eating them all yourself, okay? You've got to have a CUP. That's where I think I would come out on it.
Well, I, and I think, you know, as, I think we've, I've recognized, and Mr. Mauer's recognized, this ordinance is not as, perhaps as precise or clear as it could be. But nevertheless, I think there is room for you as decision makers to conclude that essentially a wholesale operation, if it's conducted in a manner, in, in, in an appropriate manner within the county, can constitute an Accepted Agricultural Practice. And that's. And that's consistent with the notion that marketing is allowed. There's no words of limitation. There's no size limitation that's included in this definition. It doesn't say, "This is limited to har, hobby farming." I mean, if the board really wanted to say, "You can't have any commercial value unless you get a use permit," I, to me, it would have been stated in a much more straightforward manner. So I think there are multiple interpretations. I respect your, your thoughts, your, your observations. I can't rule that out, but I don't think you could rule out our interpretation either. So I appreciate the, your consideration.
Any other questions? I have a few, as you might anticipate. Um, I, I have often encountered very unclear statutes and ordinances, and I fail to see that the, the definition of commercial agriculture is unclear. So if we take it, "Commercial agriculture means a land use." Now, at the end of your letter to the commission, you indicate that an orchard, an orchard planted and operated in accordance with accepted practices is a use allowed as a matter of right in the R1 and REC zoning districts. So I take it you agree that an olive orchard is a land use?
Yes, it's an agricultural use.
It's a land, well, I'm going through the language of the, of the ordinance itself. Land use, correct? And then it, "That shall..." Now, how would you define the word "shall"?
Well, I would agree with your definition.
Okay, "is going to" is appropriate. "Shall produce from agricultural production." Now, that doesn't, I don't see in that language anything that says there has to be a separate land use that shall produce from agricultural production. It's if you have an olive orchard as a land use, and the production of the olives, uh, shall produce not less than an average annual gross income of $2,000 based upon prevailing market values. Now, why do you think the board would have used the term "based upon prevailing market values" if they were not trying to deal with a situation in anticipation of what the income would be?
No, I, I, I think you're right. It's, it's a metric. It's, you know, the board's got the discretion to set that threshold, whether it's $1,000, or $10,000, or $100,000. The board, and that's its legislative prerogative. But, uh, and, and, you know, I'm a student of ordinances, and, and I think what struck me about the definition of "commercial" was if you were drafting an ordinance and said, "Okay, if you're going to have an agricultural endeavor and sell more than $2,000, you got to get a, you have to have a use permit," or the va, if the value's more than 2,000, whether it's wholesale or retail, it would have been stated in a, in a, in a much more straightforward manner.
I would, I would, give us the language that you think the board would have used that would be clearer than this.
Well, I wouldn't have written it the way that it was written. I wouldn't have said, "A land use which produces from agriculture." You would have said, "Agricultural, sales in excess of 2,000."
It says, "From agricultural production."
Right.
Production of olives, in this case.
Well, it's, it, the introduction of the phrase "land use," where it says, "A land use shall produce from agricultural production," to me, if the issue was just ag production, that's all it would have said, "Two thousand dollars from agricultural production." But they inserted the phrase, "A land use that shall produce from agriculture." So that phrase, that language, which is not in the accept, in, in the accepted farming practices definition, has to mean something. And so, you know, our interpretation, we've set forth, we think it means a land use activity that essentially adds value. So it's not just the passive growing of crops. It may be a retail venture. It could be a wine tasting room. It could be a processing facility onsite, because that has its own distinct types of impact. So we're, we're here today, 32 years later, trying to figure out what did the board mean when they added that phrase?
But when we have two ordinances, um, it is a standard interpretation procedure. You try to make the ordinances compatible with each other. And accepting, accepted farming practices does mention marketing, but isn't the definition of commercial agriculture the limitation you were looking for, saying that there's no limitation under accepted farming practice? You could have had a comma in, in accepted farming practice and gone into, uh, the definition of commercial agriculture and had the limitation there, or you could put it in a separate ordinance. It, it seems to me that, as Commissioner Looster was pointing out, that, uh, it's, accepted farming practice is a fine definition, and it's not at all inconsistent with, with commercial agriculture as defined, to, to show that, yes, you can have marketing, but when you reach the scale of land use that you have, when the land use is going to produce an average annual gross income of $2,000 based on prevailing market values, that's when the commercial agriculture definition's limitation is applied to, uh, accepted farming practice. And I don't see where there's any inconsistency between the two.
Well, I, I, I think as a drafter of ordinances, I would have drafted differently. That's not really the issue here. You know, we're, again, we're trying to figure out what the board meant in 1987. And I think we can probably all agree that, well, perhaps not, uh, not everyone in, in the room, but I think that these ordinances can be read a couple of different ways. And, and I think our interpretation is certainly one which is supportive of ag investment in the county. I mean, realistically, uh, you go, you have to get a discretionary permit, it's a disincentive. So that's, I think that's perhaps the latent policy issue, and that by itself would have been justification for the board to facilitate, uh, by right, agricultural operations on properties owned, R1 REC, and frankly, every other district in the county that permits, uh, ag. Again, this is not a definition that's unique to R1 or REC.
So, um, if I understand your position, then, it, uh, a person could plant a very large olive grove on R1 property, or any other agricultural, uh, uh, use, on R1 property, and it was only if, after all the bulldozing and the whatever other, uh, developmental activities had to take place, only after all that had happened, if the person decided, "Oh gee, I'm going to open a olive stand that's going to raise more than $2,000," it's only at that point that a request for a conditional use permit would be required. Is that right?
That, that's, that's correct. But again, we're not here today to debate how the ordinance should be drafted.
No, no, I know. I'm, I'm...
But I think that's, absolutely, that would be my interpretation.
That would be your interpretation, and, and I guess that we have to consider what the interests of the board, uh, were in putting restrictions on R1 development, and is it something that we only, uh, only are going to deal with when the end result is, uh, something that's, that's a much larger scale than what a normal R1 development would be? Um, anyhow, I think, um, I, I understand your position very well, and I think it's very well put. I just don't agree with it.
I, I appreciate that. But again, to put this in context, we're not talking about, I mean, this is an ag issue anywhere in your code that refers to accepted agricultural practice. This is not just an R1 issue. So your interpretation today is essentially the interpretation for the county code in every district. So it's not just an, just an R1. So is, is, so you can look at it from the standpoint, what was the board's interest in terms of promoting agricultural investment in the county? The county's got, your, your code section 14, chapter 14, talks about the, uh, the right to farm. So, I mean, this county has, I mean, I've been in and out of this county for 30-plus years on land use matters. I am familiar with the county's history and linkage to agricultural and ranching practices. So it doesn't strike me as being an unusual, uh, an unusual concept, that the board may have in fact wanted to embrace accepted agricultural practices on a broad-based level throughout the county. This is not just an R1 issue. So I appreciate your observations, just want to, and I appreciate you listening to mine.
Well, if you're, if you're zoned A1, this, um, limitation on having a conditional use permit would not apply at all, would it?
Uh, probably not. I, I defer to Mr. Maurer on that. I, I don't know that aspect of the county code. But any as, any place where accepted agriculture, so the point is, your interpretation is just not an R1 interpretation. It's wherever it shows up in the county code, and if I remember from looking at the file, accepted agricultural practices was amended into a, or that definition got repeated in, in multiple code sections. So it's not just an R1 issue, is, is my point.
So the code provides for accepted farming practices in most residential and all resource zones. Um, the only place where the commercial agriculture comes up is in the R1 and the REC zone, and in both those zones is required as a conditional use permit. So, so there is no such limit in the agricultural zones, A1, the AP zones, uh, or even the RA zone. But in the R1 and REC zones, um, that specific provision was added in 1987 to provide that limit.
I, I differ with your interpretation. I believe that, uh, when I read this, there is no inconsistency here between the two. Whether I like the way it's written, or this is what I would write today, doesn't really matter. Accepted farming practices are fine on R1. R1 is a primarily residential zone, so the intention is typically to protect residential activities as opposed to agricultural activities. But like you said, we're a rural county. We want to allow people to have agricultural activities, and even livestock sometimes if their property is large enough. But clearly, the intent by including the definition of commercial agriculture in there was to limit the scale of commercial activities in an R1 zone. And they chose to define that in the awkward way that they did of choosing a dollar amount, which probably made a lot of sense at the time. And they were careful to add prevailing market values, which is unfortunate, because 1987 to now, that number would have changed. However, it didn't. And so right now, it seems to me abundantly clear that the intention is to limit commercial activities related to agriculture. So whether it's livestock or growing something, wholesale, retail, doesn't really matter to that $2,000 threshold. And I, I think the intention is simply to limit the scale of commercial activities on a residential parcel to protect the neighbors. So, you know, I think, I understand, I thought it was, I agree with Peter that it seemed quite a creative interpretation of the language, but I don't see that. I also don't see that they are trying to limit the size of an orchard or, or anything that is never sold, because if that was the case, they wouldn't have said "shall." They would have said "capable of, could potentially, whatever." It says "shall." So it's all about that activity creating income, and the threshold they selected was $2,000. So I, I, for me, it's a done deal, and I just don't see the gray area there. Do I like it or not? Who knows? I don't even know enough about this particular project to have an opinion on it. I'm just reading the words on the page.
That's the task.
I think maybe the, the difference between your interpretation and Director Maurer's is this. I think you are assuming that the definitions of accepted farming practice, on the one hand, and commercial agriculture, on the other hand, are mutually exclusive. And I don't see anything in the record that suggests that that's true. You, you could have an operation, and I think a commercial olive orchard would be that, that is a land use that falls within the definition of accepted farming practice, and it is also commercial agriculture, once it exceeds a $2,000 threshold. That's where I come out on it. It's, it's the only way that I can interpret these to make sense, because otherwise, as Ms. Plotnik has pointed out, this, these are residential zones. That's a primary use, and I don't see how you get around the hog farm problem without having an absurd, absurd interpretation.
I, I understand the point about, but, but I didn't draft the ordinance, so if there is a hog farm problem, it's not what, what am I doing?
Yeah, that one's coming.
But, but I've been accused of a lot of things, but that's not one I can take credit for. Um, but it's, and I don't think they are mutually exclusive. I think you have to read them together. I think you're absolutely right. But when you read them together, you've got to give, uh, legal weight to the phrase, which talks about, uh, a land use from, that generates 2,000 from the production. If they had just said, if, if you were, just had these two layers, you've got accepted ag prac, uh, practices unless you have more than $2,000 of value. But that's not what the code says. It talks about a land use and links the 2,000 to the land use and dis, describes ag production as something different. So, you know, none of us drafted this ordinance, right? But our, you know, your jo, my, my job is to advocate, Peter's job is to advocate, and your job is, is to tell us what that code means. And all I'm saying is that you've, you've, I, I would, I would agree completely with your interpretation if that phrase was not inserted in there, because you, you could have harmonized those two provisions and said, "It's ag production unless it's north of $2,000. Then you got to get a use permit." Absolutely clear. I get it.
But you have the linkage between those two, land use and agricultural production. The linkage is "that shall produce," "that is going to produce."
And it doesn't say the value. It says, "It produces an average annual gross income of $2,000." Not that it could be valued at. It's all about it being a commercial operation that generates income.
Well, I, and I, I understand that point. I mean, I think that, you know, what I'm hearing from the commissioner is loud and clear. I guess I'm not being very clear about the, my emphasis on the point that where it, the phrase "a land use" was inserted into that definition. To me, that's a signal. So you, you, you'll reach your own conclusion, of course, whether or not that signal is important in terms of the construct of the ordinance. But it's a very unusual phrasing, and as, as a lawyer, you, particularly when you have contemporaneous definitions that are, are, are worked with by the body. And so when you have that, if, if the, if the legislative body inserts or changes the words between relatively similar provisions, as, as a lawyer, you're supposed to give credit to that. I mean, that, that presumably has some legal weight and has some significance. And I, so you, I've shared with you what I think that that phrase means. Essentially, it's a retail component, uh, and you can, because otherwise, why would you have marketing in accepted agricultural practices? It contemplates a business enterprise. That phrase means nothing unless you believe that retail operations, but it doesn't say, you know, unfortunately, they didn't put, for, in support of your interpretation, they didn't put the cap in the definition of accepted agricultural practice. So I understand the point. I don't want to beat this horse to death, uh, beat this orchard to death. Uh, you've been very kind to hear me out.
We'll be more careful next time.
You've been, you've been very kind to hear me out. So we, we are, I think we're happy to respond to questions.
What's your, uh, end goal of putting this orchard in?
Well, yeah, and, and to clarify the earlier point, this is not an interim use. The, the Tuscan Hills project has significant open space lands that are not part of the subdivision process. So it's an opportunity to make a significant economic agricultural investment in this county, and, uh, it, it would be facilitated depending upon the interpretation.
So what are you going to do with the olive? Say that you did plant this orchard, what would you do with all this?
Well, I'm, I'm, at this point, I'm going to believe it's like every other grower in the county. And not, maybe not every other grower, but lots of growers probably commercially sell the, sell that to whoever buys them on a wholesale basis. So it's a business.
R1 zone, R1 zone, correct?
This, this would be a business. This is not a hobby. This is the real deal.
All right, thank you.
Wouldn't the right thing to do here is to take this open space that you're talking about, that you can plant olives on and get the zoning changed?
Well, that's...
Or a conditional use permit.
Well, you know, I, I've spent 40 years chasing rezonings, use permits, tentative maps, development agreements, general plan amendments, and the like. And it is a, uh, it's a cost, uh, it's a cost of business that is significant. And it is a, it's a cost, it's a cost of business that is significant. It's a cost of business that involves significant risks to the point where frankly, I advise lots of my clients not to do business in California, specifically because of the environmental review process. I tell them to take their jobs out of state. It's too much risk. That's all this is, I mean, this essentially boils down to. This is a potential investment decision, and the question is, is it worth making that investment with the risk of going through a permit, the expense of the permit process, and the risk of going through environmental review? I know it's sort of counter because your job is to take action with respect to use permit applications and environmental documents. But that's not my job. My job is to, if there's a pathway that does not require a discretionary permit and the expense and risk, that's my job.
I would agree with you. As an architect who's been doing it for 40 years here in Calabars County, conditional use permits are a risk, however, and it's not something I would lightly recommend one of my clients to do. But if they believe that it is a good project and a good use and something that will generally be seen as a positive effect in the county, then I've gone forward with many conditional use permits and had a good outcome. It seems like there's a little bit of a assumption here that a conditional use permit would be turned down, or that there's a big risk of that. So you know something about your project that makes you believe that and that you really want to avoid that at all costs. Which we're not really talking, because this is a flat-out interpretation, we're not really commenting on your project. It's just, we're curious because it came up, right?
No, I certainly respect the observation. No, it's not a question of getting turned down. I mean, you know,
It's an expense. It's time consuming.
No permit is guaranteed, and you know, this county has a history of supporting agricultural use. So to me, it would be probably an application that would be well-received, and we'd have to prove up the merits of the process. But it's expensive and risk- laden. I mean, I spend a lot of time trying to keep my clients out of court. We get into court because of the California Environmental Quality Act. It's simple. It's not rocket science. And I've had lots of great projects derailed and killed because of the secret review process. So I'm trying to, my objective today was to try to create an interpretation that allows someone to, positions them to make a significant economic investment in the county without the risk.
Totally understood.
Up to you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Good morning. My name is Tom Hicks. I'm here wearing two hats this morning. One is on behalf of Golden State Equity Investors, the appellant. And the other is working on behalf of CB Development Partners, which is the new owner of the Castle &amp; Cook portfolio. So I guess I have a question I could pose to the, to the commission because it's something, a personal experience that I had on a project I developed in Santa Clara County called Cordova, just in San Martin. And we developed a golf course project in a resort and a residential development, which was zoned R1, but we made them three and a half acre parcels, and we have grown orchard, I'm sorry, vineyards on that. In fact, in the back part of the property, we in total grew over 275 acres of vineyards. We didn't get a use permit for those individual homeowners to have three acres of vineyards on their property. And those grapes were sold and harvested to the Clovischance Vineyard that was developed on the property. Now, they sought a conditional use permit to develop their winery on the property. But the individual homeowners did not have a use permit to sell their harvest to Clovischance. So I bring that up as only as an example of something that I'm personally familiar with because I did that. And I would pose a second question that, under R1 zoning on Tuscan Hills, if we were to make those 40 acre parcels on that portion of the property, under the 335 units that were allowed on that project, and each of those parcels, and I, we kind of drew a map to see how that might work, you could get around seven to eight 40 acre parcels. And if each of those landowners, homeowners, grew olives and they sold them, would that be a commercial operation, and would that then fall under your ordinance? So I would ask the commission to consider those two examples. Furthermore, on behalf of CB Development Partners, the neighboring landowner of Copper Valley Ranch, one of the reasons this situation has come up is that the Copper Valley Ranch parcel, which was owned by Castle &amp; Cook, who had had plans to develop 2,000 homes on that parcel, it didn't make it into the general plan update, and now it's resource management land, if I'm not mistaken. Peter, is that correct? They were approached by a large ag concern to grow olives on that parcel. The way that the CCWD has been approached and supports the use of their water, because they may lose their water rights if they don't use some of these, to run the lines through the Tuscan Hills property through that. The group that's proposing that on Copper Valley Ranch probably will not go forward if they can't do that and develop that 500 acre portion of Copper, of Tuscan Hills, rather, because of the infrastructure cost to run that, those water lines through the property there would make any sense for them. And if you went through the conditional use process, the time, they'd probably move on to something that's just a little easier to do. I might also bring up, I think, an interesting study that was done, I think about 12, 15 years ago, called Planning for Prosperity. And it was, some of you may be familiar with it. You're shaking your head.
Their business castle.
So it was funded by Hewlett Packard Foundation, another, a member of other large foundations. And it talked about the production of agriculture in the county here, and how they should promote that and keep it. And so I would just have the commission keep that in their mind as well, that I think this has far-reaching impacts beyond just this property here. This particular, I mean, yes, it's R1 zone, but there's no development out there today. It's vacant land. So you're not impacting anyone within the R-zone. We border CCWD on one portion and on Saddleback, I'm sorry, Saddle Creek, rather, on the other, and the Copper Valley Ranch. So there's no other neighbors that would be impacted by this. So some, you know, peculiar situations here, and, but I think that the overall overreaching goal of trying to promote jobs and agriculture in the county should be considered in the overall application here as well. So, thank you. Happy to have, any questions you might have under that?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, Colleen Platt, myvalleysprings.com. I agree with what Planning Commissioner has brought up. Tuscan Hills project was approved as a residential and recreational development. And if the applicant intends for agriculture on the project, then it should be rezoned to the agricultural zoning, whatever parts they want to do it. As a resident in R1 zone and R3 zones, we definitely appreciate that commercial agriculture is not allowed in our zones without special use. I live in Rancho, and the special plan made a point of specifically saying that commercial agriculture is not allowed in residential areas because it does have an impact whether it's sold by retail or sold by commercial or whatever. The scale of the operation is the whole point of the definition and the reason for not allowing it in R1 zones. And the applicant clearly wants to do a large-scale operation. He mentioned in his own words, "agricultural investments." That's a large-scale commercial operation. And it sounds like very large acreage is planned, that a wholesale operation is planned. So we're talking an agricultural operation, which is not suitable in R1 or REC. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Any other public comment? We'll go back to the department. Do you have a rebuttal?
So there are a couple of issues brought up, and I don't want to beat the dead horse, but there are a couple of things that I wanted to address. You know, this "shall produce from agricultural production." I think if you took that phrase from agricultural production and put it at the end of the sentence, that's not what it says, but it would also, you know, allege that "shall produce not less than an average annual gross income of $2,000 from agricultural production." That clearly, you know, just the way that they chose to construct that sentence, I don't think it changes the meaning. It clarifies the meaning if you reverse that phrase at the end of it. There, I think we already discussed the fact that only in the R1 and the REC zone is the term "commercial agricultural use" a limiting factor. And I think Commissioner Rooster brought up the fact that they are not mutually exclusive, and I would agree with that. Mr. Hicks brought up, you know, other jurisdictions' projects and, you know, different rules for different jurisdictions. We actually have a project in Vallesito that has a mixture of residential and vineyards. You know, if a project wanted to include an agricultural component, that would be viewed as part of this project. You know, the open space areas, the recreational zone areas of the Tuscan project were set aside for a golf course and for resource protection purposes. There are wetlands, there are rare plant habitat there that have yet to be fully identified. Part of the concern here would be that those resources that were intended to be, you know, reserved to a protection of that resource could be destroyed or damaged because of the planting of the orchard. I think that if there was a desire to come back with a revised project to include an agricultural component in those open space areas, we could certainly look at it. But again, the purpose of this, you know, hearing today is to look at the, whether or not the interpretation of, you know, my interpretation of whether a use permit is necessary to plant a commercial agricultural operation was correct. I believe it was. I hear that.
And I'd fully agree with your last phrasing of "to plant the orchard." Because if we wait and say, "Oh, you need a conditional use permit." If we wait until the orchard has been developed and perhaps impinges upon those environmentally sensitive areas that you're talking about, we will have the damage happen before we even have a request for a conditional use permit if we're waiting until $2,000 is reached on their actual sales. So I think, I think the phrasing of conditional use permit in order to plant an orchard of the scope is the correct approach.
Well, my, you know, when, I sort of hesitated when you first asked, or Kelly had first asked me whether or not you actually had to produce the income. Because my initial interpretation, my initial response was, it's the creation of the orchard that is the impact. It's the land use that has the potential. I had to go back and reread it to make sure that it said what it did, and then I thought, well, you know, that's not exactly what it says. But again, the, going back to the legislative intent, and while the board was focused on animal keeping and livestock in residential areas, the same impact can occur from horticultural activities, as you've just pointed out, that the change to the land occurs before any income is produced. And if you're planting an orchard or a vineyard, it's several years before any income is produced. But by that time, you know, it's fait accompli. So I think the intent was to minimize the amount of agricultural activity to be consistent with, you know, a hobby farm or, you know, 4H type use. And that limit was established by the board at $2,000. And I agree with Commissioner Rooster that these aren't separate, distinct, you know, they're, commercial agriculture is a component of agricultural operation or accepted farming practice.
Presumably, all the commercial agriculture will be done according to accepted farming practices, the term is. I don't, the only thing I question in your comments is the support from the administrative record from before. It seems to me we could just look at the ordinance and come up with our own conclusion because that staff report that you provide indicates that it doesn't agree with what the board is doing. And I just wonder if we can use it to determine what's in the minds of the board when we have a statute that I think we can derive from.
Well, you know, it's ultimately your decision. And, but typically, when there is some confusion as to what the actual language of the code means, you go back and look at the administrative record to see, well, can we discern from, you know, that record what was intended here? And that's why that was included. Now, again, I would agree that the language is clear in my mind that it's, the income is the threshold. And once you reach that threshold, it kicks it into the higher category, which then requires a use permit. But I wanted to verify that, so I went back to the administrative record and included that as additional information to support my conclusion.
Other questions for the department? We have rebuttal. Thank you. Okay, well, and then no further questions for the appellant, I assume. We'll close the public hearing and open it to discussion and deliberation.
Okay, I'll start. I probably, where I come out is already clear. But I would think that if a commercial olive orchard that shall produce in the future, $2,000 or more is commercial agriculture and requires a CUP. The word "shall produce" does, I think, speak to the future. It doesn't say "has produced." It says "shall produce." I also think that if somebody plants a vineyard or an orchard or some trees that creates fruit or nuts of a value of $2,000 or more but never sells it, that is not commercial agriculture.
Then the question, of course, is, and I have a problem with this. So somebody is planning on doing, I mean, and what we say about olive orchards is going to apply as far as commercial agriculture definition to hog farms as well. Somebody starts, can somebody start a large-scale agricultural production use on R1 property and disrupt the environment and everything else? Do we have to wait until we see if they're going to sell the hogs or sell the olives to determine that a conditional use permit is required? Or do we actually just look at the scale and it's, as the board made a presumption, that if you're going to do something of that scale, that it is indeed, the "shall produce" is, can be, let's see, it's, the definition is "going to" for "shall," but also "used to express what is inevitable or what seems to be fated or decreed or likely to happen." This is, again, Webster's Third Amendment National. And I think the board looks at and says, "You're not going to have an orchard of that scale unless we can reasonably expect that it's likely to happen that you're going to sell those olives. And if you are, are those olives going to be, give rise to this income under prevailing market values?" So I think, I think in order, in order to give weight to the full intention of the board, as indicated in the language, that we have to say, if the thing is of a certain scale, then the assumption is going to be that you're going to, you're going to sell that stuff. You're going to sell those hogs. You're not going to just keep so many thousand hogs as your pets. You're not going to go to all the expense of having a commercial-scale olive orchard and just let them sit on the ground and have the birds eat them. I think, I think that the board is trying to avoid the development and then waiting around to see what the income from that development is. I think that's what their language is intended to expect, that a commercial-scale operation is indeed going to be commercial and give rise to income. is indeed going to be commercial and give rise to income. And I think that's, I think that's a reasonable interpretation with the language is.
I don't disagree with that.
Well, the problem, though, and then is, okay, somebody says, "I'm going to grow this many hogs, I'm going to raise this many trees, plant this many trees." But gosh, I just love watching olives grow. Do they need a conditional use permit, then?
Well, I don't think that hypothetical is likely to come up.
Well, the whole.
I do think, I do think that when you take together the "shall produce" language with the prevailing market values language, that is looking forward.
Yeah.
And I think I agree with everything you said, which is essentially, if it looks like it's going to be big enough to be commercial, that's how we're going to treat it.
Yeah. Oh, good. And then I think, I think that perhaps were an amendment, it might be indicated, is, they might, as Commissioner pointed out, the $2,000 might be a rather low level right now. I think that the methodology is good here, and I think we have to follow what the ordinance says. But the board certainly could consider whether they should now be changing the $2,000 to some other figure as the test of the scale.
When you consider that one 4-H steer can bring more than $2,000.
Yes.
Right, point's well taken. The other thing I would say is, I don't, I don't see a lot of, get a lot of help from the legislative history in terms of the 1987 Planning Director's Report, because I don't think it cast any light on the definition of commercial agriculture. But the notice that was quoted in the staff report is helpful, where it tells you how they're going to define commercial agriculture, as a use generating gross average income in excess of $2,000 a year. So that's where I come out. I would agree essentially with the Planning Director's interpretation.
Well, I think when you read this, it says, "While we do not see problems with the occasional horse, rabbits, et cetera, in these zones, we can't foresee a realistically viable commercial agriculture operation in the R1, R2, or R3 zone." Clearly, their intention was to severely limit commercial agriculture in residential zones, as opposed to rural residential or RA that anticipate a significant agricultural component to it, or livestock component. But maybe it's time to poll the commission on the actual question here, which is whether we agree with Peter's interpretation and not how we would rewrite the ordinance, because I think we'll have an opportunity at that sometime in the future, if we can get that general plan adopted.
Was there more general discussion?
I totally agree with the Director's decision because, under a definition, it says, you know, the average gross income of $2,000 based on prevailing market values. The intent is to sell or make a profit off of the agriculture, so I believe that his decision is correct, is my belief.
And then I guess, Commissioner Bocelli, do you have thoughts?
I've just been listening, and I agree with all of you.
I hope we agree with each other.
And the idea of watching olives grow, I, quick story, I tried growing one. And, oh my gosh, what, it did produce. And then I found out how to actually process them. And, you know, they use some pretty strong chemicals. So even, even a hobbyist doing olives can produce some pretty bad chemicals or will be using chemicals on a land. I think we ought to get over to the resolution wording, because there's quite a few changes I can see that are probably going to be needed.
I think that, is there any further discussion? I think, before we actually get to the resolution, Peter, I would like you to consider where, whether you would want to rephrase, or we can discuss how it might be rephrased, the planning director, whereas the planning director interpreted the code to mean that cultivation of blah, blah, blah crops, where an average annual gross income of $2,000, it doesn't scan. And I think it needs to be clarified as to whether your position is the cultivation of these crops where, which, when mature, can be expected to generate an average annual gross income of $2,000, is one possible statement of your position. As it is, it's grammatically a little confusing, and it doesn't make clear whether the $2,000 is necessarily "has been earned" or "can be expected to be earned."
Let me make a suggestion along that line. So it would read, "Whereas the planning director interpreted the code to mean that the cultivation of tree, vine, and vegetable crops were an average annual gross income of $2,000 or more would be expected to be produced, is considered commercial agriculture."
That, since.
Use the actual lang.
Since we're actually putting words in your mouth, Peter, we will appreciate your, I think, I think right now, but.
That reflects my intent.
Okay, let's, let's go to the, to the resolution, your recommendation in the resolution, and then we'll make any further findings at that point.
So I recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution 2019-01, denying the appeal, therefore finding that a conditional use permit is required for planting an orchard or vineyard or raising farm animals where the average annual income from such activity would be capable of producing $2,000 or more in the R1, and I would like to amend that to, and rec zone.
And then would you change that "whereas" to the language that Commissioner Rooster just suggested?
I am comfortable with that.
I think there's a better way to say that. I think that you might be able to say, "Whereas the planning director interpreted the code to mean that the cultivation of tree, vine, and vegetable crops within, with the potential to create an average annual gross income of $2,000, is considered commercial agriculture, blah, 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 or more." You know, I think that "or more" needs to be in there. Or at least $2,000, or whatever we want to say. But what you're trying to get in there is that it's not the time when you actually receive the money, it's when you undertake the activity that will result in that. Kelly, is that what you're trying to get to?
Well, the word "potential," I think, is a little broad.
Well, or reasonably anticipated.
Things could be potential but not likely to be expected.
What, what was your language?
Whereas the planning director interpreted the code to mean that the cultivation of tree, vine, and vegetable crops were an average annual gross income of $2,000 or more is expected to produce.
Right, okay.
Whereas the "expected to produce."
Means before average.
Before an average annual income?
Yeah.
Okay, and that, that, it seems to me that, would you agree with that language?
Yes, I would. It's just the placement of it. I think it just needs to be associated with the average annual gross income.
Right, okay.
And we also insert the prevailing market value term came out of the code. And I wonder if we could change the word "cultivation" to be "planting," and get rid of the last phrase.
I think that's.
It's actually the planting that seems to me that triggers this.
That's, well, it's actually, it's actually pre-planting. It's the bulldozing and everything else that might come into it, but.
I don't think we can correct everything that's in the existing ordinance by, in this resolution.
Well, I think, I think cultivation is a more general term for, for the entire procedure, pre-planting as well as planting and post-planting. So I have no problem with cultivation.
Again, what did Peter want to say?
I chose cultivation because it included the establishment of irrigation systems, the, you know, tilling of the soil, so it would sort of, it would include planting. But it's broader than that, so it would also include any other site preparation necessary prior to planting.
Is that acceptable to you?
Oh, absolutely.
Could you just delete the phrase "the planning of such"?
Excuse me?
And then "whereas," just delete the phrase "and the planting of such," and just say "and requires a conditional use permit," referring back to the cultivation.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Is that agreeable to you, Peter?
Sure.
And should number one of the actual resolution then be changed to that same kind of language?
Well, I think if, if.
Let me finish.
Yeah.
And then it could also specifically mention residential property in that one sentence, the one numbered one.
Oh.
That's, that's our resolution from there down.
The, well, I think in number one, why first you want to put in the word "shall" between that and "produce," so you have the definition of commercial agriculture as unambiguous, agricultural activities that shall produce an average gross income of $2,000, comma, based upon prevailing market values.
At least $2,000, or not. The actual language is "not less than" is the ordinance.
Yeah, okay. I think, I think that, why not? It's unambiguous.
So shouldn't it be, again, instead, that instead of saying "shall produce," that can be expected to produce, since that's what we said before?
Sure. I mean, that, that's the definition of "shall."
If that's what you're trying to.
Okay, okay. Let's, let's put in, if that's all right with everybody else.
Oh, God, you're driving me crazy.
Can be expected to produce. Then, under the evidence, it suggested changes on evidence under number one. I have, I have some, if nobody else does. Nothing in the definition of commercial agriculture implies that some other activity other than simply, and I would say, "growing a crop instead of producing," or agricultural commodity, and then I would insert "of sufficient scale," comma, and then the rest the same.
The word, the word "growing" instead of "producing," it seems a little awkward when you're talking about livestock.
I think producing is the correct term, actually.
Producing is broader.
High yields of producing.
You've got to remember those hogs.
That's right. Okay, that sounds good. So, then on number two, as far as administrative record, I don't think we need number two in here.
I would argue for keeping number two in that it actually does address the intent and sort of shows that there was an effort to look at why it was worded that way initially, and why the limitation was there.
And that it's just an indication of the concerns at that time.
Right. Since we talked a lot about what they intended when they wrote it this way, I think that supports Peter's opinion.
Any other thoughts? Number two?
Oh, I agree with her.
Well, then, I must agree with you. All right, so we'll keep number two in. And number three, the only thing I see is, is under evidence, the last sentence, the "is" should be "are," since it's referring to large-scale agricultural operations.
Correct. You caught it.
Yeah. You put these things in there, I know. Any, any other suggestions on number three?
No, I didn't hear it. You caught the "aren't compatible."
Yeah, yeah. Before, before I gave you a chance to, yeah.
I don't have anything else.
And there's, there's a comma up there. The purpose of the R1 zone is to provide land for single-family residential uses, comma, and commercial agriculture would be incompatible with the intended rule. It's a compound sentence.
Oh, yes.
Any other suggestions on the resolution?
Nope.
And Peter, are you happy with where we're ending up with that?
I'm ecstatic. No, I, I think that the edits that you have suggested make sense, and I appreciate you supporting my interpretation.
Okay, and then ready to entertain a motion.
So move.
And that motion is to accept the resolution as amended. And we have a second.
So your, the actual decision is to grant or deny the appeal?
That's part of the motion, too.
I, I move that we suppo.
Deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal and support the interpretation of the planning director.
And adopt the resolution subject to the amendments made previously. And just for clarification on that, on the "whereas" discussion that we had, we're adding the phrase after "$2,000 or more is expected to produce."
Which "whereas" you used.
I'm trying to make sure that I have the edits.
Yeah.
Correct.
Could you reread what the final decision was on that?
Well, I think I would, I would ask Commissioner Rooster, since we ended up with his language, to come up with that, the third "whereas."
Okay, whereas the planning director interpreted the code to mean that the cultivation of tree, vine, and vegetable crops were an average annual gross income of $2,000 or more is expected to be produced, is considered commercial agriculture, and requires a conditional use permit in the single-family residential R1 zone.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Oh, yes, and, if we could insert "and" the recreation zone.
Oh, okay. Because that's your interpretation, even though the recreation zone isn't, or is recreation zone particularly involved in this?
Well, it's, it's all with this specific one, it is the only other place where this limitation is.
Yeah.
So it's, it's clear in the future, if ever comes up again.
So you amend your motion.
I amend my motion to include rec zone in the third war, whereas.
Wonderful. Any questions? Yeah.
Can I throw a rock into this for a second? The third "whereas" is talking about tree, vine, and vegetable crops. When we go down to the resolution, we're talking about crops or agricultural commodities. Are we being inconsistent there? Should we use the crop or agricultural commodity?
So again, the "whereas" was basically the action that I took that was appealed. And so I think that having this interpretation made here with this resolution can expand that to, you know, the full range of agricultural activity as defined in.
Right. So instead of saying "whereas" tree, vine, and vegetable crops, you would have a more generic term that encompassed everything.
Well, again, my interpretation, you know, that precipitated this, was specific to, you know, an orchard, tree, vine, and vegetable crops. But as we've discussed, the, the interpretation of the co-section here today, I think by expanding that to animals as well makes sense, and it doesn't have to be the same.
You satisfied? All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. And the motion, as I understand it, is to deny the appeal and to approve the resolution as amended. and to approve the resolution as amended, including the recreation zones. And so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So passed. And thank you very much for your input. It really was appreciated.
And just for the record, this action is final unless it appealed to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days. And an appeal will be filed with the planning department.
All right. So if I can find our agenda, here we are. Action items, action items, whatever action items are. Information items, informational items. We have no study session. How about commissioner reports?
On here.
I, I would like to commend Lisa Mutertis and, oh gee, I'm blanking on her name right now. Karen Sisk. Karen Sisk for their participation and conscientiousness and their devotion to duty over the past few years in, in reaching some very hard decisions through many discussions and providing many different perspectives for all of us to learn from and to discover. And so I, I just wanted to state appreciation to them for their contributions. I'd also point out that it was pointed out to me that in the future, when we get to the consent calendar, if anybody has any suggested changes to the minutes, you should ask to have the minutes removed from the consent calendar. And then we discuss what the changes are and pass on that. I wasn't aware of that parliamentary.
So typically with the consent, I, consent calendar, you would request that, you know, if someone has a concern about either the minutes or sometimes we'll bring back a follow-up resolution if we had to make amendments and, and you say, we'll just bring it back, we place it on consent. If everyone's comfortable with it and there's no one, either staff or the public or any commissioners that want to feel that there's an error there, then you can just make a single motion to approve the consent calendar. If someone wants to, the chair should ask, is there anyone who wants to pull anything from the consent calendar? And if you wanted to correct the minutes or had some concerns about whatever else was on the agenda, you would pull that specific item. That then becomes a regular agenda item for discussion and hearing.
Even though it hasn't been noticed as an agenda item, it was on the consent calendar.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
And so, you know, minutes don't require public notice as, you know, the appeal hearing was, or a map or something like that. But it, it's on the agenda, so people have the opportunity to discuss it if they want to. Typically, the consent items are things that are routine, you know. Hopefully, we've grammatically corrected, you know, all the issues that. Not expect to be controversial. So, so there's, there's, you know, again, we don't do as much as, say, the board does, where they might have, you know, a dozen or more items on the consent calendar. But if someone had a concern about an item, they'd have the ability to pull it. It would then, we would approve the rest of the consent calendar if there was anything else on it, and then you would go to those specific items that were pulled.
Okay, are there, is there a report from the planning director, including maybe something about the general plan?
Yes, there is. So we are wrapping up our internal review of the administrative draft of the final EIR. I'll be meeting with our consultants later today to go over some final edits. At that point in time, I don't know how much time it will take for them to make those changes. I'm hoping that by the end of the month that we will have a document that's ready for public review. Hoping is the operative word there. It could be a little bit later, but we certainly should have something in February to be available. So what I'd like to discuss briefly is special hearings beginning potentially in March. I will not be available for the meeting of the 28th. I'll be at the annual county planning directors conference. So we have regular meetings scheduled on the, not the calendar in front of me, but the second and fourth Thursdays. So these hearings will probably be very lengthy. You know, the, the admin draft of the final EIR was over 500 pages long. There will be a lot of, a lot of the issues that were raised earlier during public comment are included in discussion. There will be changes to mitigation measures, changes, potential changes to policies that you will need to work through. You know, it's, it's difficult when a process like this takes so long that there's been almost a, well, let's see, about an 80% changeover in commissioners since you reviewed that draft, planning, or general plan two years ago now. And so there will be, you know, a desire to revisit some of the issues, the controversial issues that were addressed. There'll be desire from the public on all, the full spectrum of concerns are out there. Ultimately, you will be needing to make a recommendation to the board to accept, to certify the EIR, to adopt a general plan. And with whatever changes you recommend, some of the mitigation measures that were suggested by the public, you know, those will be included in the final EIR as recommended changes. Some will be recommended, included, and you may find, no, that's really not feasible. We don't think that's, you know, appropriate for whatever reason. And so it's going to be, you know, a lengthy process. Hopefully, it won't take too long that we can get a recommendation to the board. But again, you have the right and responsibility to review it and make a recommendation to the board. So I'd like to try to start hearings in March on that. And I just want to check to see your availability, and then we can schedule the room and, you know. Yet I don't know if we'll be ready. I want to make sure there's plenty of time for you and the public to review the final EIR. We have the draft general plan that's been out for some time now. We have the, so the draft general plan and the draft EIR. The final EIR includes responses to all the public comments as well as recommended changes to both the general plan and the draft EIR. And so we won't necessarily be revising those documents other than as it's included in the final EIR that these are the recommended changes that we will be making. It's sort of a convoluted process, but it, you know. As Abbott had pointed out, the secret process is very, you know, challenging.
And the recommended changes, we have the recommended changes to the general plan itself.
Yes, yes. So the mitigation measures from the, from the, but, so I just wanted to put that perspective for you as far as what we're looking at and whether or not you are interested or willing to and able to schedule special hearings during the month of March and April for that review. We haven't had a lot of regular items on our agenda lately. It's hard to say what, I know we have, you know, projects coming up, but there'll probably be, you know, one or two or three items on each regular agenda. Otherwise, we could certainly hold those hearings in the morning. If we get through, then, you know, depending on what time we get through, we could be starting in the afternoon on general plan hearings, or we just, that's the next item. And at 10 o'clock, if we finish with the item before it, we go into the general plan. I think we'll probably need special hearings.
Oh, I, I do, too.
Evening hearings because some of the public might be interested of working.
That's, yeah, I need to turn on the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's certainly up to you. If you want to hold evening hearings, you may. It's, you know, always a little challenging to find space that's available because this room is often used for other things. It also includes additional costs because of overtime pay for staff and that stuff. But there's certainly a building to, to schedule an evening hearing if you want.
Well, I, I agree that we will need special meetings. And I think going in, I think it's important that we not be stuck on a particular number of special meetings because we really don't know going, we, we don't know what we're going to be looking at.
Right.
We haven't a pretty good idea as to what's happened in the past. But I have one complication is that sometime during March, I'm going to have a hip replaced. So I don't want to set it, I want to be able to be at the meetings and that should, other than the surgery day and maybe the day after, I wouldn't be available. So if we can wait until after next Tuesday to start talking about specific dates, I might, at that point, have a surgery date.
I'm wondering, I, we have to be mindful of the Brown Act and the fact, I mean, I get we can do some really brief direction to staff to put something back on the agenda, but if there's going to be a longer discussion on how to schedule hearings, we should probably put it on the agenda for a bigger discussion.
Okay, well, put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, I, I, I mean, we need to start scheduling these now. I appreciate Julie's concern about, you know, Brown Act violations. I think, you know, scheduling, you know, talking about, are you willing to hold, you know, extra hearings and, and, you know, I, I think that we can do that under the, you know, under this, you know, discussion item. So what we'll do is reserve the room and sort of identify potential dates for additional hearings. And as we, and we'll then, you know, coordinate with you as far as availability of schedule. And we can put that on the next meeting's agenda as far as trying to step those specifically. So on, what, February, what's our next date, Annette? February 14th?
How sweet.
Yeah, I expect candy.
We will try to, you know, and, and by then I'll know for sure and you'll have the document in front of you, hopefully, that we can then say, okay, we're going to need at least this amount. And if we need to put, you know, go beyond that, then we can continue to schedule hearings just as we did with the review of the general plan itself. Sound good?
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
The, the only other thing to report out, I'm assuming most of you know, the board of supervisors at the end of its session asked to schedule a study session on the possibility of bringing back a cannabis ordinance. And it's not, it sounds like it's possible that we will receive direction to bring that back sooner than, rather than later, in which case that will also have to come to the planning commission. So just sort of a heads up on what's in front of you.
We can ignore it for a while. Okay, thank you. Now, as I, my understanding, we don't have to have a vote on adjournment. I can just adjourn this meeting, correct? I mean, I think so. Okay, the meeting's adjourned.